Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January Meeting of the Board of Trustees 2019. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance, right hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I hope everybody had a happy and healthy New Years. Starting the year off, congratulating our deputy mayor. She was honored by the Towne Hempstead with the Make a Difference Award. And I'll read the caption from the local newspaper, The Herald. Rockville Center Deputy Mayor Kathy Baxley was presented with the 2018 Make a Difference Award on December 13th by fellow village resident Laura Gillan, who is the supervisor of the Towne Hempstead, to single out her accomplishments throughout the community. Kathy founded RVC Moms, a Facebook group focused on informing others within the community, which now has nearly 3,000 members. It has become a source of information sharing to get the word out when help is needed around the village. As a breast cancer survivor, Kathy sits on the board of the Rockville Center Breast Cancer Coalition, providing counseling and guidance for those struggling with this disease. A member of the Rockville Center Community Fund, she donates her time raising funds for village residents who need financial help during times of crisis. Last but not least, she is involved with the RVC Sponsors of the Arts, which raises awareness and funds for scholarships for local students to pursue their passions in the arts. And that's, to me, just the beginning of what Kathy Baxley does and who she is. I can speak from experience, over the last two years, Kathy is by my side every day in Village Hall. We work out a lot of things together with the other trustees. She's involved with PTA, and she helps so many people in this village in their time of need. And I congratulate you, Deputy Mayor, on this great award. It is with heavy heart that I announce the passing of my niece, 12-year-old Kimmy Schroeder. She earned her well-deserved wings yesterday morning. She fought as hard as she could, for as long as she could, against neuroblastoma. Although she lived in California, Kimmy spent time in hospitals all over this country. While in Memorial Sloan-Kettering, which she was there so much, we had the privilege of Kimmy living in our home. My wife Barbara reminded us every September of this horrific disease at our board meetings, which is to recognize Pediatric Cancer Month. Barbara was Kimmy's acting mom, and she rarely left her side. She traveled all over this country with her and Kimmy's dad, Peter. Barbara was with Kimmy in San Diego as she passed into heaven yesterday morning. Our family would like to thank this entire community who embraced her, her dad, Peter, our family, and especially Kimmy, when she was on her journey for a cure. Thank you. Chief Cook?
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. Mayor, first, I'd like to extend my condolences to you and your family on your loss. Very sorry to hear. Congratulations to Deputy Mayor on receiving the Towne Hempstead Award. Very nice. I hope everybody had a Happy New Year. The all-volunteer members of the Rockville Center Fire Department had another busy month. The following are just some of the training events and village events that the members of the Fire Department participated in, aside from the normal call volume and their family and work obligations. On December 7th, the Rockville Center Fire Department participated in the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Ceremony. On December 12th, the Fire Department participated in an active shooter drill the Police Department held, to ensure that we can support the needs of the Police Department in this type of situation. This past Sunday, we held an engine phase for new members, to familiarize them with the engines, the equipment they carry, and engine operations at fire scenes. And at this time, we have several members signed up for an attending training classes with the Nesta County Fire Service Academy. The following are the calls that the members of the Rockville Center Volunteer Fire Department responded to since we last met. There were 37 general alarms, 24 still alarms, 20 motor vehicle accidents, 190/80 cases, five mutual aid fire calls, for a total of 276. Our year-end totals were 530 general alarms, 338 still alarms, 194 motor vehicle accidents, 2,235 80 cases, 42 mutual aid fire calls, 17 mutual aid ambulance calls, and two mutual aid technical rescue calls, for a total of 3,377 calls for the year. This is up 187 calls from 2017. The Fire Department continues to work with the Mayor and the Village Board on updating two of the firehouses that are in need of major repairs, from mold issues, outdated electrical and plumbing issues, and leaking roof issues, as well as replacing or repairing the fire trucks that have surpassed their 20-year life term. I'd also like to remind everybody that if you're interested in what the Rockville Center Fire Department is about, or if you would like to join, you can stop by any of the firehouses on a Sunday morning to get the information. If you have children between the ages of 13 and 17 that are interested in joining the junior fire department, they meet once a month, typically the first Sunday of each month, 9:30 a.m. at the 103 Maple Avenue Firehouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
We have one exterior design review tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Mayor, prayers are with Kimmy and the old family.
Thank you, Pat.
We have one case this evening. It's case nine of 2018, Sandra and Matt Molinari. The property is One Reeve Road. The project is a second-story addition with interior renovations. The case has been referred to this board per Section 330, 4B, 1B-1, having an estimated construction cost of in excess of $3,000. The applicant was required to seek relief from the zoning board, which they received for a side yard setback. The applicant was also met with the consultants and accepted all the recommendations, except one, one being redesign of the west elevation. The architect will speak more to that. The architect is Victoria Morelli. And I included two extra items in your packets that I... One is the view of the existing home from the front. Yep. And the other is what the consultants... The other picture is what the consultants were suggesting to do with the roof line on the west side. And I'll let Victoria speak to that.
Hello. My name is Victoria Morelli. I'm the architect for Sandy and Matt Molinari, who have recently purchased a house at One Reeve Road. The existing house is a one-and-a-half-story low ranch style, and our design approach was to create an updated craftsman-style home that would fit into the scale and fabric of Rockville Center. Specifically, in this part of the village where the homes are a bit more contemporary than other areas of the village, we wanted to maintain the charm of the entire area of the village. So we tried to incorporate some details, such as the roof style, the board and batten that is so typical in Rockville Center, as well as some real wood elements, and kind of give it an updated feel. So a very important element for us when designing this was the scale of the house. We wanted to be really careful to keep the scale low and long, rather than, you know, bulky and too high. So we kept it well under the required 32 feet, and we chose a roof line that would hip off to the edge of the house, in order to kind of keep that long feeling and that lower, more appropriate size for the neighborhood. So to talk a little bit about the materials, the existing first floor is brick, which we're going to be keeping all around. We're going to be painting it and doing like a whitewash on it, which, I don't know if you can see, but we have a little sample of a typical whitewash. On the second story, we're going to be doing a composite wood siding, white also. And then some of the feature elements, where there's the board and batten, will be a white, like an AZAC type of material. And we're incorporating some real wood elements throughout the front columns, and also some detail of the stickwork at the top of the gables and the garage doors, which will all be sort of like a weathered oak. The roof, the main roof, would be a gray asphalt shingle. And we have sort of an accent front portico roof, which is going to be like a black metal standing seam, which we feel will really bring together the look and feel of the house with the white and black windows, the white building and black windows as an accent. And, let's see, what else? So we hope you'll find that this house is a welcome addition to the charm of our village, and we're really excited to take any questions that you may have or comments.
Anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Anybody in the public have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And we have some papers for you.[735.23][735.23][applause]
Thank you.
Beautiful.
We have one public hearing tonight, RVC 1809, a local law to amend the code of the Village of Rockville Center in relation to block parties and special events. This hearing was continued from the last meeting. Tom Levin, do you want to review?
Sure. We, as you mentioned, we had a hearing on this last month. There were a number of public comments and suggestions for revisions in the law, which, to the extent we were able to do so, we've incorporated into a revision, which has been available for the requisite number of days and is on for hearing tonight. So we have changed the law and put in requirements that would allow the village to turn down special event permit applications where they conflicted with other events going on in the village, or religious holidays, or any other holidays for that matter, where the village felt that it was going to be inappropriate to have it on those particular dates. I'm trying to recall the other changes. There was one requiring that the permit holder be present at the function at all times, and that the first responders have contact information for them. We put in a requirement, not necessarily that the permit holder must be there, but that there had to be at least one person there at all times for whom we had all the emergency contact information. So somebody who held the permit could leave and leave somebody else in their place to be in charge, but they would also have to give that information to the village. We also have a provision that residents cannot use their private vehicles or any other means to block the roads, to blocking the emergency access. We're going to provide the barriers that are necessary. We bring them in and take them out. And also a requirement that there be advance notice to all residents and businesses within a reasonable distance of the event before it's held, so that everyone's aware of both the permit application and the event... Permit application before the permit's issued, and the event before the event is held.
Anybody want to speak of the application? Seeing none. Oh, sorry. Mr. Greenfield.
I'm out of my regular seat.
All right.
That was it. Good evening. Happy New Year, Mayor and Board. First, Mr. Mayor, my thoughts and prayers go out to you and your family. And I know very well how devoted and dedicated Barbara was to Kimmy, and the entire community of Rockville Center mourns with you. Specifically with respect to this law, I want to thank the village attorney for incorporating the many good and positive comments, and you made a good law even better. Thank you for listening to me and for others, and I feel much better after the changes that were made, that it will be a workable law in the best interests of the residents of the community. Thank you.
Always glad to make you feel better.[951.57][951.57][laughter]
Anybody else like to comment? Seeing none.
Move to close the hearing?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move approval?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have several action items tonight. The first is approval of a resolution to publish a legal notice for a public hearing regarding Community Development Block Grant Program Year 45.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second item is omitted because it was handled, voted upon during the briefing session on Thursday night. The third item is approval for the electric department lineman to attend a safety program conducted by Northeast Public Power Association at a cost of $17,280.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fourth item is approval to acquire engineering and inspection services related to the rehabilitation of Tank III located at 10 Sunrise Highway. The work will be performed by D&amp;B Engineers and Architects PC. The total cost of these services will not exceed $122,000.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fifth item is approval of a professional services agreement with Concord Management Services LLC, doing business as Concord Environmental, to provide engineering services to specify the replacement of a catalyst for Engine 14 in an amount not to exceed $4,600.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The sixth item is approval of a professional services agreement with CSA Engineering Services LLC for the design of substations three and four. The cost is not to exceed $182,500.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seventh item is approval of a pension table donation from the Friends of Lee Kopman, the Square Dance caller at the Recreation Center, who passed away in November 2018.
Move approvals?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The eighth item was omitted, again, because it was voted on during the briefing session. The ninth item is approval of a compensation change for one managerial and confidential employee, effective January 2019.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tenth item is approval of adoption of the SECRE Type II Resolution for Fieldhouse Roof Replacement at Fireman's Field.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The eleventh item is approval, seeking approval of a resolution for the Mayor, the Village Administrator, and the Village Attorney to execute documents relating to the dormitory authority of the State of New York grant for the replacement of the fieldhouse roof at Fireman's Field.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twelfth item is confirmation of various insurance policies acquired through Salerno Brokerage Corporation. The renewal is effective December 31st, 2018, through December 31st, 2019. It includes public entity, property, boiler and machinery, cyber liability, fire department package, and umbrella policies. The cost of the various policies is $453,772.60.
Just on the question, am I correct, Mrs. Murray, that based on these premiums for the upcoming year, they're literally, it's only a de minimis increase, is it not, from the $452,250 of last year, correct?
Yes, with right sizing a few policies and increasing the coverage on another.
Move approval?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirteenth item is approval to adopt a resolution on the policies and standards governing the implementation of small cell sites throughout the village. Mr. Levin, can you introduce this for us?
I'd be happy to, thank you. This is an item about which the people in the village are going to be hearing quite a lot, I think, in the relatively near future. About 90 days ago, a Federal Communications Commission order went into effect nationwide. It's extremely complicated, approximately 100 pages long, with all the different opinions of the different FCC commissioners, for the purposes of implementing a nationwide program to promote 5G cell technology, and the construction of the equipment that's necessary for those systems to operate, even though those systems have not yet been fully engineered, and there aren't yet any phones that will work on 5G technology. But one of the requirements of these regulations is that effective next Monday, any applications that come into us for antenna sites to be built as part of these systems have to be dealt with based on rules and regulations and procedures that we have promulgated and published prior to the application coming in. We don't have adequate such policies and procedures in effect today. So this resolution would impose them effective now, so that they'd be in effect on Monday in case we get any applications. We will be reviewing this further and making revisions and fine-tuning this from time to time as we go along, but it's to put into effect at least what we think are very comprehensive restrictions on these different antenna sites, because they're going to be proliferating all through the village, and under the FCC regulations, we have very little ability, if any, to stop them. So I'm asking that the policies be adopted now, so that we can start with those as of next Monday, and then continue to fine-tune them as we go along.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any old business?
No.
Is there any new business?
Nope.
Then I ask you to approve the minutes of the following sessions. First, the executive session of November 19th, 2018. The briefing session of November 29th, 2018. The executive session of December 3rd, 2018. And the board meeting of December 3rd, 2018.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one bid to approve. It's actually a change order. It's bid number 1809W1 in Prenz 886. The Merrick Road bypass water main replacement Phase 2. AII Allen Industries Incorporated was awarded Phase 2 of this project on October 7th, 2018, for a cost not to exceed $271,125. During the construction of the replacement water main along Merrick Road, unforeseen circumstances were encountered. Additional work will be required to complete the connection in an amount not to exceed $39,080.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On December 18th, Bruce Schwarting, the Fire Department Secretary, wrote the following report. Dear Mayor Murray, at our regular council meeting held on December 18th, 2018, we had the following changes to our department membership. We regret to inform you of the passing of ex-captain Robert Hennessy of Woodland Engine Company Number Four, and Michael Long joined the Alert Engine Company Number Two. Our membership remains at 329 members. Sincerely, Bruce, a Schwarting Department Secretary.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Murray?
Yes. Trustee Oppenheimer asked to be excused. He had a doctor's appointment. Please keep Ed in your prayers. Ed is battling a horrific disease. He does come in Village Hall all the time. He's a great trustee. He's a great friend. I am also praying for him. I have a few events that I went to with some of the trustees during the month. I'll read a few of them off. December 4th, I was invited to South Nassau Community Hospital for a special announcement, and that's where South Nassau is merging with Mount Sinai. December 6th, Thursday, I was invited to a luncheon for the De La Salle School by Joan McNorton. It's a wonderful school for young men in Freeport. They do a fantastic job with these young men and get them prepared for college. On December 7th, I was not here. I missed Pearl Harbor Day for the first time. I was in California. I want to thank the chief for being there, and especially the American Legion for running that Pearl Harbor Day. It's been going on in our village for many, many years. And I also missed the senior center holiday Christmas party at Knights of Columbus, Chris. I heard it was a great event. On December 12th, the deputy mayor and I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting at Frank Steaks, and I was really fired up at that meeting because Santa Con was declared that it were coming to our village. And I spoke very passionately for about 10 minutes, and I can't tell you what I said on TV, but I was very, very upset that they were coming, and I explained to all the local businesses that it would be terrible on the Saturday before Christmas to have this event going on. I have to give thanks to our Commissioner, Commissioner Vafides, for speaking to all people involved, and they decided to go elsewhere. So thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for that. On the 13th, I want to thank all my fellow trustees. Once again, we got together and hosted a holiday luncheon right here in this room for all our employees. We love all our employees. They do a great job for us. They're so valuable to our village. That night, I went to the Kathy Baxley Award. I spoke about that. Monday, December 17th, the deputy mayor and I were at a breakfast at Reliance Firehouse. This goes on, what I'm told by Louis Franco, almost on a daily basis, where he invites members to come on down and have breakfast at the firehouse, and he does get a group every day, I believe it is, and they are ready to respond to calls. So it's great that he brings them together, and they're just, they're there. So if there's a call, they're not coming from anywhere. They're not coming from work. They're not coming from home. They're there, and they're responding very quickly. December 18th, on a Tuesday, the deputy mayor and I went to the Hispanic Brotherhood Senior Christmas Luncheon on Clinton Avenue, and they had entertainment there, and Margarita actually grabbed me, and I had to dance with her. It was interesting for all the ladies there, right? That evening, the next evening on Wednesday, I went to a coat drive at Cobvalvo, where the Girl Scouts and his employees get hundreds and hundreds of coats, and they give them to people in need. Sunday, December 23rd, the deputy mayor and I went to Connor and Friends Christmas Party at the Rec. And I have to thank Paul Lawless for all he does for autistic children. He has brought together so many families to the Rec Center on a monthly basis. This was a Christmas party, and they use our Recreation Center. Both our gyms and these children get to play on all of our apparatus. So thank you once again, Paul Lawless, for all you do. Another friend of mine, Joe Malone, passed away. I mention him because he was a 50-year Rockville Center firefighter and honorary chief. Joe, you'll be missed. He was originally in Floodlight Company, Rescue Company, and then he was in Defenders Host Company for many, many years. On January 1st, I was invited, and I went with the county executive Laura Curran, to the inauguration of Governor Cuomo. It was quite an event, and I had never been to Ellis Island. What a... It was quite an event, and I had never been to Ellis Island, what an interesting part of history that was. Friday night, I went to Floodlight's annual Christmas Party, that's the company I'm in, the rescue company. And just on Sunday, the deputy mayor and I were at the Rec Center again for the Hispanic Brotherhood's Three Kings Celebration, which is a feast of the epiphany where all the children come and they're entertained by a clown, and then they have the three kings come in and give them all gifts. And that is my report. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Murray. Very busy month, as the mayor just said, but before I just touch on that, I wanted to reiterate a number that Chief Cook just stated. In the year two thousand eighteen, this past year, he gave a lot of numbers, but I think the most important one is the number three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven, which is the number of calls the volunteer members of the Rockville Center Fire Department attended this past year. Again, it's three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven, and I just want to point that out and emphasize it because of all they do for all of us and all the residents on a volunteer basis. And I just want to acknowledge you and thank the department for that. The whole month was very busy, lots of holiday fun things going on, starting with the Hanukkah party at the Rec Center and the candle lighting at Central Synagogue that the mayor and I attended. Moving on, there was, the Rec Center had the breakfast with Santa's helpers, which is always a community-wide, successful, very fun event. And then the Sandell Center had so many fun things in collaboration with the schools. The middle school came and performed, the high school chamber singers, and intergenerational club came and sang and helped out, and just very fun parties. It was really great to see the senior citizens interacting with the middle school children and the high schoolers. The mayor and I visited United Nursery School at their invitation, and we came in and read to the classes, which was really very nice. And we also went to the center stage performance at the Sandell Center, which is the singing group of about thirty-five senior members, and they performed holiday hits, which was fun. The Rec Center hosted a holiday luncheon for everyone in the village, which was wonderful. And we finished up this weekend with a Friday, a New Year's Eve party, I mean, a New Year's party, I'm sorry, at the Sandell Center, which, again, it's, if you need, if you ever want to come down and just see how much fun they have there, I highly, highly recommend it. It's a great time and everyone's just having fun. So I wish everybody a very happy New Year, and that's all.
Thank you. Trustee Grillo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to reiterate the deputy mayor's comments, it is a fun time of year in December with the various holiday parties and events that we get, we have the privilege of attending on behalf of the board. But I would just want to extend my personal condolences to the mayor as well and his family in light of Kimmy's passing. I know it was a very, very tough battle for Kimmy, and she was a warrior throughout, so you, Barbara, and your family will obviously remain in our prayers as well. And secondly, and the mayor touched on it, our fellow trustee, Ed Oppenheimer, has been battling a terrible disease for several months now, and he continues to be here at Village Hall almost on a daily basis, stopping in, corresponding with all of us, to the extent that he may not be here physically tonight. Please know that he continues to correspond with us, he was with us at the briefing meeting on Thursday, and he will and continues to be in our thoughts and our prayers, and I ask all the village residents to please keep him in your prayers, not only for the service that he provides to our village, but really for the type of person that he is. And just on a lighter note as well, and I mean it in all seriousness, though, as I've said throughout this past year, it's one of my personal goals to get as large a turnout for this coming Memorial Day Parade as possible. I continue to talk about this every month, and I mean it in all seriousness, I'd like to, we're only a few months away, but please, to the extent that you can make the time, whether it's only a couple of hours or so on that Monday morning, Memorial Day morning, I'd like to see as big a turnout as possible in honor of not only our veterans, but also, as the deputy mayor pointed out, our first responders here in our community, both our police department and our fire department, I think, are an exemplary group of people, and I think it's further tribute to them that we show as a community as good a turnout as we possibly can. And then lastly, I just wish everyone and their families a happy, healthy, and prosperous two thousand nineteen, and look forward to serving you in the coming year as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, there was a very special guest at Connor and Friends at the Rec that Sunday. Woodlands Engine Company, Number Four of the Rockville Center Fire Department, brought Santa, and that was co-supervisor of Public Works, John Thorpe. Trustee Seppi?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to keep our residents informed of two things that are going on that are moving very, very fast that will have an impact on the residents of this village for years to come. The first was mentioned by Mr. Levin, our village attorney, with regard to the new set of rules that we are trying to put together regulating to the extent that we're allowed to small cell sites. First, so the public understands what does that mean? Well, in the old days, and when I say old, of 4G technology, as you all know, cellphone carriers had giant cell towers to essentially share their bandwidth to broadcast their signals. And with the advent of 5G technology, giant cell towers will be a thing of the past. While that by itself is a good thing, it means the transmitting infrastructure will be much more spread out into very, into small nodes or small cells of about three cubic feet, roughly the size of a backpack or a small suitcase. However, the downside of that is they will be numerous, possibly into the hundreds, and the federal government has issued at a speed that we've never seen before, rules through the FCC severely restricting our ability to regulate and prevent the installation of those small cells. We were given a very fast deadline, and Mr. Levin has done very, very fast and very thorough work coming up with rules on a very short notice, to the extent that we, as a local municipality, can set forth rules governing the safety, the aesthetics, the placement, the density, the appearance and the uniformity of these small cells, keeping in mind that you have four major cellphone carriers, in addition to fees and other things that will regulate their use. The upside of this, for people that don't know, and we've all learned a lot about this in recent days, is that 4G to 5G is literally a factor of a hundred, so that cell service and data, once the system is in place, will be at roughly one hundred times faster and much greater bandwidth than previously. As with everything we do, because this is moving so quickly and because this will have such an impact on the village, we will keep you informed every step of the way. The second thing that's going on, also moving relatively fast that will affect us, is the pending marijuana proposals that are circulating in Albany. The governor has announced his intent to support lifting the ban on marijuana for recreational use. That's been announced publicly. However, there has been no set of laws that have been put out by Albany yet telling us exactly how that will be done and exactly what that will mean. We're not waiting. We have already begun to study the topic, again, to the extent that we can find that the village can have an impact within our three square miles, to the effect that, to the extent that we can affect what will go on, and to the extent that we can protect quality of life once this change in the law does take place. And again, we will keep you informed every step of the way. So with that, announcements for this coming month. On Wednesday, January ninth, there will be the next meeting of the Village Board of Zoning Appeals here at Village Hall at seven thirty. On Monday, January twenty-first, Village Hall will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day. On Tuesday, January twenty-second, at seven PM, will be the next meeting of the Village Planning Board, also here at Village Hall. The next meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals will be Wednesday, January twenty-third, at seven thirty in the evening, again here at Village Hall, followed by another scheduled Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on Wednesday, January thirtieth, at seven thirty PM, again here at Village Hall. On Thursday, January thirty-first, at six PM, will be the next briefing session for the Board of Trustees and Mayor. And the next full meeting of the Village Board and Mayor formally will be on Monday, February fourth, at seven PM, again here at Village Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. January, February in the past, I used to give a State of the Village. I'm not going to do it this year because it takes about thirty-five minutes to talk about all the things that we've done in the past year, but what I am going to do, after speaking to the trustees, is over the next four months, do segments at each meeting. For instance, we may do two segments. One of the meetings we'll do police, another fire, we may do building and electric together, but we want to inform all the residents what has happened in the last year in their village and possibly what we have planned for two thousand nineteen. Thank you. Privilege of the floor, Ellen. I should have said Ellen, and then privilege of the floor, right?
Mr. Mayor, I was sorry to hear tonight of the passing of your niece, Kimmy. Your devotion and Barbara's devotion to her have made us all feel like she was part of our family, and I'm sorry for your loss. Now I have about three hats to wear here. First, I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy New Year. On behalf of the museum board, in December, we hosted some of the children from the Rosalie Young Daycare Center, you know, we had the house decorated for Christmas, we had three or four different trees, which I reported on in the past, so a fun time was had by all. Our president, Frank Sipe, has been working with Aileen from the Rockville Center Public Library. For the month of April, there'll be a display of old-school things that they picked out that they thought would be of interest to the public, so keep your eye open for that. And as I always remind you, when you're doing your spring cleaning, and yes, spring will come, the first Sunday in May, May fifth, is our appraisal day. Okay, switching hats. On behalf of your task force on historic preservation, we'd like to thank the board for meeting with us last night, Thursday night, in which we reviewed our accomplishments for the first year and gave to you some ideas of what we'd like to do for the coming year. Jen Santos and I are looking forward to meeting with trustee Seppi and try to answer all his questions on what we would like for the future. On January twenty-sixth, we've called a meeting of the historical societies and landmark societies of Nassau County, and we will have guest speakers at the library from nine to eleven. So that's one of our next steps. Changing hats again, I am vice president of the Rockville Center Library Friends, and January is our membership month, and I'd like to hand you all applications for membership, and anybody who goes into the library, those applications are available, please join during our membership month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, the board. Condolences, Mr. Mayor, on your loss.
Thank you.
I got about four things I want to talk about, one of which is probably what I really came here for, but since I'm here, and I'm going to try to run through it real quick so I don't use all my time because I'm sure it's limited. The first thing I just wanted to say, I probably actually should say thank you, but it has to do with the Christmas tree lighting. Not sure if there was different publications put out, but everything I saw said it started at seven thirty, but when we got there, it probably started at seven. I was a little underdressed and it was pretty cold, but my fiancee, not being from the area, was looking forward to it. It was tough for me to explain to her why everything said seven thirty, but when we were turning the block at Maple and Forest to hear the mayor on the loudspeaker counting down the tree lighting up, so we did catch it, but it's just something, I don't know if there was some kind of mistake, but that might be something to just whoever does the website schedule.
Where did you see it on, at seven thirty?
I have a picture on my phone I could show you after that, on the villagers' website, it says seven thirty. So, again, I'm sorry. The second thing is the light at Long Beach Brower and DeBott, is that a village light or a county light?
County.
All right. Has anybody from the village ever tried to see if there's anything that could be done about that Brower entrance? I live on the south side of Rockville Center now, so I don't really go that way that much anymore, but I have been lately, and the same problem, I don't, maybe this is something that's been brought up, and I'm sure you guys are aware of it. I mean, I don't know, but it seems to me that the line to wait for that light was moved back probably a long time ago because the N fourteen bus would make that loop and you didn't want to hit the cars. However, the sensor for that light is up really past that line, or just a smidge of it's behind that line. So people who don't know that the sensor is up that close will sit back there and the light will not change, and it will just cycle through. Is there any way we can ask the county to potentially reactivate the sensor behind it, or move the white line up, or program the light to just cycle three seconds, something? Because when you're sitting at that light through four cycles, it's kind of ridiculous, and it's been going on my entire life, I think. Is that something that's ever been brought up, or, just curious?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll speak to you.
I don't know if I was repeating something that perhaps maybe a resident in years past has brought up.
No, I think people in the area, I think people in the area are aware.
Most people do know, and I live in the area, so I know.
They know to inch up, not that that, I mean, there's something to look into.
Right. Some people don't, some people cut it through. When you're trying to get to work and, look, it is what it is, but when four cycles, it's a little, gets a little much. So maybe once in a while, it could just...
No, we'll look into it, definitely.
The third thing is, I'm sure the village mustn't get, you get any kind of report, I'm sure, from the police department about like traffic stops and like statistics of like how many stops they do, or, you know, anything to that effect? Do you guys get anything like that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Have you know, I'm just curious, and I really don't know the answers, I'm assuming everything's fine, but has there been any, are those numbers generally the same for the last several years, each month?
Pretty much.
Because one of the things that I kind of have an issue with is that, or a concern about, is I have to cross Sunrise and North Forest at least twice a day, almost every day. And I am not a speed expert, but I've had a couple issues where trucks that have to be going at least fifty-five miles an hour either cannot or do not, or choose not to stop at red lights, and they are blowing the red lights when I'm trying to cross it, where they're fifty, seventy-five, a hundred feet from that red light. It's fairly easy to catch these people, and I have not once ever seen anybody ever get stopped. So I would just like to at least express my concern that at least at that light, there seems to be some kind of issue, at least that I'm noticing, again, not a scientific study by all means, but just something that, ever since they put red light cameras in the county like seven, eight years ago, which I'm not really in favor of, it seems like everybody, when they know, oh, this one doesn't have a light, I'm just going to bloat because nobody's probably going to stop me, because, so, just something I wanted to...
The police commissioner is right behind you and he's listening, so...
Commissioner? And then the last thing, which, again, I could probably spend all night on, but I'm sure the board doesn't want to, but if you remember, I was here two months ago about the sign being taken, the political sign being taken from the curb.
Mm-hmm.
When I was at that meeting, I kind of gave the benefit of doubt. I had just heard about it that morning, I really wasn't prepared, and I kind of was giving everybody the benefit of the doubt, but apparently, I know, Mr. Mayor, you had apparently spoke with News Twelve, and we, I guess it is confirmed that it is, was in fact, that the billing department did remove that sign. Is that, is that something that the village is willing to admit, or is it still something that's being looked at or investigated?
No, the billing department did remove the sign.
So, again, I had expressed that I don't know whose sign it was, I wasn't voting for it, I can tell you right now it didn't. I don't think she won. I couldn't even tell your name again unless it was sitting here, I wouldn't be able to tell you who it is, but it just, again, it bothers me. And I made a formal request after that meeting, and Mr. Levin provided me with some documents. It's pretty light, maybe people aren't complaining, a lot of it was from two thousand sixteen. A lot of it was the same communication, excuse me, between the resident and the village, so, although it was ten documents, it was probably only about three complaints. But I guess at the, and I apologize, I wasn't sure if this was going to be available online, I didn't know if this was being recorded, if it's on the website, I couldn't find that, so I apologize, so if I say the wrong word, reference the wrong person, but somebody down in that end, excuse me, one of the ladies, had mentioned something about there, something being wrong with the law and that the village was looking at it. According to E code three sixty, which I know is not, there could be errors, it looks like the village had amended that law back in early two thousand eighteen. So I guess my question is, what is still wrong with it? Because I just, if you're going to do it for one thing, you got to do it for everything. If you're going to remove somebody's sign, you got to remove everybody's signs, you got to remove their basketball hoops. I'm all for people playing in the street, I was a kid, I saw your letter... I saw your letter that you wrote to the resident, Ms. Murray, about, you know, the culture of people playing in the street. I'm not trying to destroy, that's not why I'm here. If I didn't see that story, I never would have been to, I never even would have come here, but it just, it bothers me. And I went down the same street that I went down last time, and I still count now in basketball hoops. So, I don't understand why, how I, as a resident, I can't look at that as somebody in the village playing a political game as opposed to the village enforcing its laws equally, and if there's something wrong with the law, then fix it, because it just doesn't make sense to me. And I, it just, it still bothers me. So, either the village is, if the village said, you know what, we didn't enforce the law, and we're sorry that that sign shouldn't have been removed, I would probably take that and say, okay, fine, it's not going to happen again. But if the village stands by what the billing department did, then how is the village not enforcing this against everybody? You don't have to, it's not very hard to find this stuff. Go down Lee Avenue to start a basketball team. So, I don't know. Since, I guess my last question for tonight would be, that comment was made last time about there being something, I guess that the village is having a problem with the code or there's something wrong with it, has anything been done since that? I know that village law can't be changed overnight. I know it's a process, but has any effort been made to address whatever issue the village thinks it has with that code?
Mr. Levin?
I have two comments about that. Number one, I don't think you know whether the village enforced those laws against anybody else. You're alluding to one particular incident, but in fact, the village removed other signs from other candidates at the same time. I don't know if you're aware of that, so.
You may have, but.
Although it was enforced.
Besides signs, has the village enforced it?
Across the board. So, that's as far as the signs go. Secondly, is to, the village is looking at the codes. I'm not at liberty to discuss things that are in works until they become public, but we are looking at the various regulations regarding that to make sure we clarify that signs of all nature are not allowed on public property and will be removed.
Which, look, if that's what the village wants to do, and they vote for it and pass it, I'm not trying to stop you. I'm just trying to make sure it's uniform. So, I guess my other question then would be, though, like you said, I don't know how the village has enforced it against everybody. Besides signs, has the village done anything else? How many basketball hoops has the village removed in the last year?
I have absolutely no idea.
Does anybody know on the board?
I wouldn't know the answer to that.
And again, I, I want people to play, I don't, I'm not trying to stop it, but it just, it bothers me that a political sign, well, so, I'm just trying to understand what's going on here, how it's going to be corrected, and if, why the village is doing it for one thing, why they're not doing it for the rest.
No, like the, like our attorney said, we are working on something now. We looked into it, we're cleaning up the language, but when it's finished, we'll announce it to the public.
I think also you're conflating different things, and I don't think that they are, should be treated the same. For example, I just said, it's been the village law for some time, it's been our policy for some time. We don't allow signs on public property. We remove them when we become aware of them. That's not to say that we don't allow other things on public property. So, for example, the most common example, when you talk about the curb strips where those signs were, we allow people to put sprinkler systems in there, and that's, that's the village's property. But there is a process by which those things can be authorized.
Right.
So, some things are allowed, some things are not. Similarly, with respect to the basketball hoops or any other recreational equipment, we did fix our laws on that last year and make clear that we do allow a number of these things that were not, the law previously was not clear that they were allowed. We changed the law to make clear that they are.
So, the village's interpretation of the code is that the hoops are allowed when they're not in use?
They're allowed under the provisions in the village code, whether there are violations of that or not, I don't know. I'm not an inspector. I don't go around and do that.
Again, I don't want to take up the board's time, but my plain reading of that code is that it's not supposed to be there. If you're not using it, you cannot leave something on public property. You can use it on public property, so if somebody wanted to wheel out, let's say, a basketball hoop and play with it, the code seems to allow that. But the code, I think, is very, very clear from a plain reading that you can't leave it there. So, again, signs, basketball hoops, it, it, the only reason I'm here is because of these signs, and the other thing is just.
You're catching me on the wrong night, I'm a.
I know, and I apologize, I didn't, you know, obviously, I'm not here to make it worse, but it's just, I'm going to keep coming back here until I'm satisfied or get an answer that I think actually makes sense, because so far, it doesn't make sense to me.
Anybody else like to speak? Privilege of the floor. Seeing none, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.